Good evening, one and all. We welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting this May 15th, 2018. We have a full quorum of all seven planning commissioners in attendance. We welcome city staff and residents. We're grateful to serve you and hope you feel welcome throughout the proceedings this evening. The first item on our agenda with the consent calendar is approval of minutes for May 1st, 2018. Commissioner Quinney?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. First public hearing this evening is Aurora... Oh, yes, Commissioner Green.
Can I make a motion that we continue item number six to July 17th?
Yes, we can take care of that right now. Any second to the motion, Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to continue item number six to a future date? I believe it's... Should we... The official date isn't at July 17th? July 17th?
That's what I said.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Our first public hearing this evening is Aurora Heights rezone, 8157 South Maple Leaf Way. Rezone 21.04 acres from RR.5E Rural Residential 20,000 square foot minimum lots zone to R110E Single Family Residential 10,000 square foot minimum lots zone. Garbet Homes, Paul Garbet is the applicant. Is he here this evening? Please, feel free to come forward and present your application.
Good. Good evening and thanks for having me here to present to you. I'm representing Garbet Homes and we're excited about the possibility of doing a home community here in your city. Aurora Heights is the name and so it's located just to the west of Bangator Highway and to the east of 40th West. To... Highlighted in red. What we're asking for is a rezone from the half acre to the R110. The future land use map shows that this area has been designated as the... As R110 or medium density, which also encompasses R18, R19, and then what we're seeking, the R110. You can also... Sorry, just going back one. You can also see that the northern portion of our property is already zoned for that R110. So, next one. Use this? Okay. Does it have a laser as well? So, this is already zoned for R110. To the south, you have RM and then the one acre lots to the west. So, like I said, the general plan calls for medium density. In evaluating it in our preliminary studies, we decided not to pursue the R18 or the R19, feeling that the R110 made more sense and fit in better with the surrounding neighborhoods. So, here's our preliminary site plan. What we're proposing is 79 total lots with... So, sorry, here's Bangator Highway and the canal here to the west. And then we have the south entrance and two northern entrances. So, 79 lots with two detention... Two detention areas for water. Here are some renderings of the homes that we're proposing to build on here. We're looking at offering six different floor plans. Each different home style would have three different elevations. These both would be more of the modern style and we'd also offer a transitional style and then more of a traditional style as well to go with that, just to offer more variety for the buyers as well as for the greater community. And then we have some interior pictures that give you a kind of... Give you a better feel for what we... What kind of improvements we do inside of the home. Hard surface flooring, solid surface countertops, designer cabinets, nine-foot ceilings on the main level. All of these homes would come with three car garages. And then I've also included two different floor plans to give you an idea. This would be our rambler or ranch style, so main floor living with an unfinished basement. This one shows two car garages, but it would actually be three. Then you have the two-story home with three bedrooms, two and a half bath, three-car garage and an unfinished basement. The size of these homes would range from 2,500 square feet to 3500 or 3,600 square feet. So, pretty good size and we're hoping to attract families. One thing that sets us apart from other builders and the niche that we occupy is we build energy-efficient, high-performance homes. And so I just want to briefly kind of tell you a little bit about what that means. All of our homes are pre-wired for solar. So, when the buyer moves in, if they want to add solar to their home, all they need to do is run those power lines and they're up and running. Another thing that we do that really gives you the most bang for your buck is we put in about twice as much insulation as a typical home. And we're able to do this with the blown-in insulation, but also how we've developed our framing techniques to create more space, to fit more insulation in there. These techniques combined can give you a lot of value for your insulation and have a big effect on the overall performance of your home. In addition to this, we have high-performance windows and LED lights, energy-efficient furnaces as well as air conditioning units, tankless water heaters and eco-friendly materials. So, it's all... It's easy for me to stand before you and say that the homes are energy efficient and they're green, but it doesn't really mean anything unless you can quantify that or prove it out. So, what we have in the industry is a rating for homes, a HERS rating, which stands for Home Energy Rating System. And what that is, is basically miles per gallon, but for a home. So, a typical new-built home would be... Would get a score of 100 if it was built to current codes. A zero-energy home means that you're producing as much energy as you're using and so we provide these zero-energy-ready homes, which come in at a HERS score of in the 40s or in the 50s. So, nearly twice as efficient as our competition. And that's reflected in the power bills. It's reflected in the amount of resources that they're used, that is used in the homes to heat them and to cool them. And all of these, every single home is independently tested and verified by a third-party raider to get this score. So, we're not running tests on our own homes. We hire that out. It's third-party, tested and verified. In addition to inside the home, we're also very concerned with outside and conserving resources. So, we are... We have started applying local scape principles to all of our landscaping. And this is a program that was developed by the Jordan Valley Water District. And what it does is it combines, and you may already be familiar with it, but combines these indigenous plants that do really well in our climate with more traditional elements like grass. So, you're getting significant water savings without sacrificing curb appeal and still providing some of those elements that people are familiar with and want in their homes. So, you know, a grass place for their kids to play on and those traditional elements. We also have tankless water heaters with circulation technology. And what this is, is instead of having to run the faucet for a minute or two until hot water comes out, a pump already starts that process for you without any water being wasted, so that hot water comes out of your faucet immediately. Low flow toilets and faucets and Energy Star appliances all help to conserve water. And then just a little bit of background about Garbet Homes. We are a local company, started here in the Wasatch Front. We've been building for over 30 years. That's more than 5,000 homes and apartments and in over 30 different communities throughout the valley and even out of state. Last year, we sold 119 homes and did about that many in rental units. So, we have experience and we like... You know, we stand behind what we... Our commitments that we make to cities and I think some of the awards that we received over the years speak to that. Such as Community of the Year. We also have a number of awards for our high-performance, energy-efficient designs. Continuing, I just wanted to point out kind of how this project will fulfill some of the goals outlined in the general plan. So, a safe and healthy living environment for residents. One of the benefits of an energy-efficient home is that it insulates very well. When it is so... When the envelope is so tight, you have to mechanically replace and recirculate the air to bring in fresh air from the outside. So, every home has an ERV system, which does that multiple, several times throughout the day. And while it's doing that, it's also filtering the incoming air. So, we've had a lot of... So, the indoor air quality oftentimes is much better than the outside, especially on days with heavy inversion. And we've even had families move in whose children suffer from asthma and allergies and have seen significant improvements in their children's health, living in one of our homes. So, sustainability is also another goal with the general plan. These high-performance homes are very sustainable. They consume half the resources of a typical newly-built home. And the local landscaping designs is much more water-efficient than a typical landscaping design. This community would bring greater connectivity to the neighborhood by providing entrances and exits from not only the north, but to the south. So, that's easier access to old Bingham Highway and to 40th West. We offer attractive, well-designed homes. I think the awards that we've won for our architecture speak to that. And with these homes come increased land value. Is that timer for me or...
Yes. Do you have much more that you'd like to present?
No, just a couple more slides.
You're welcome to continue for another minute. Thank you.
Thanks. Diversey dwelling units, the multiple-floor plans that we'll be offering, I think will complement well the neighborhood and then also the city's goal of providing more single-family homes for residents. I know that traffic is a major concern, particularly with the neighborhood and the surrounding communities. I don't pretend to be a traffic engineer, but on the official recommendation from the city staff is that no significant traffic impact is anticipated with this rezone. An independent traffic study that we had that was done shows 876 daily trips. I know that sounds like a lot, but that's based on the national average. And what that looks like is 68 morning trips during peak hours and 88 peak hour trips in the evening. And their conclusion, all intersection studies would operate at acceptable levels of service during both morning and evening peak hours with no significant queuing anticipated. And then just briefly, I think there's... It's important to view this community as potential citizens for West Jordan that will come. They'll be active, they'll contribute, they'll bring their families, they'll stay put and they will... That's where they'll set up routes. And then the greater housing shortage that we're all experiencing right now in the Salt Lake Valley, in the Salt Lake Valley, which can have significant economic consequences. And I just think we desperately need more housing in this valley. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Garbet. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Commissioner England?
The traffic study you cited there, how old is that? When was that completed?
That was done in 2016. Our traffic study was done in 2016. I believe... I'll let the traffic engineer speak to when theirs was conducted, but I believe much more recently. And I have spoken with the traffic engineer and because he said that he didn't anticipate a great change in that study because of the site plan is very similar to the old one.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. We'll reserve some time for you after a public comment if there's anything you'd like to address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Page, you have this presentation for the city?
Yes, Chair. I'd be glad to make a short presentation. Nate Nelson, our city engineer, is also here that could address some of your questions that could particularly pertain to drainage and traffic issues. This is the current zoning map showing that this property of 21.04 acres is currently zoned rural residential, 20,000 square foot lot minimum. As considered in our general plan, is very low residential density. Our future land use map calls for this property of 21.04 acres to be medium-density residential. And then you could see the future land uses of the surrounding properties, a very low density residential to the west, medium-density residential to the east, high-density residential to the south and medium-density residential to the north. This property is situated between Bangator Highway to the east and the canal to the west. In our comprehensive general plan, we define or designate medium density as zoning 1-8... Excuse me, R18 and R19 and R110. So, this is considered medium density under our comprehensive general plan. This is just another concept plan that the applicant has provided. And here's an aerial view showing that the actual property is 26.06 acres and the rezone is for 21.04 acres. And you could see the connectivity that would occur to the south by 8,400 south and then the northern connectivity that's just to the north of the property line, that's approximately at 8,100 south. Here's some photographs that might be of interest. So, I'd be glad to address any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Any questions for Mr. Page or other city staff? I guess I would just ask, Mr. Nelson, what year was the city's traffic study done?
The city, per se, has never done a traffic study. There was a traffic study done two years ago. It was done by Hales Engineering, which was the same one that was quoted here by Mr. Garbet. But it was done by... It was done and paid for by a previous applicant. So, it was done in 2016. It was done at the direction of the city traffic engineer and as far as I know, it didn't have any fatal flaws. It did contemplate another access point as a potential, which would have crossed... I don't know if you've got that... Oh, can you go to the aerial? It contemplated another access point crossing this canal, so with a canal bridge connecting into this road and going out to 40th West. It would have been a little bit of a leaf valve, but it did not have a high traffic number to that. But that was part of the older traffic study that we do have.
Thank you. Mr. Page, could we go back a couple of slides from where you are? Keep going, please. And keep going. Almost there. One more. There we go. So, just at the top, Mr. Nelson, when this is referenced, that the city traffic engineer said no significant traffic impact is anticipated with this rezone, just to double-check. Not an official traffic study, but that's just a preliminary assessment at that point in time, two years ago?
I would say that's true. In fact, what they're showing right there is what traffic engineers, when they study an area, they look at... The most important data that they use are peak hours. So, you know, obviously, traffic is scattered out throughout the 24-hour day, but the most traffic is during the morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour, when everybody's leaving for work and coming home from work. The numbers they're showing there show 68 morning trips and 88 evening trips. If you look at the higher number there is, 88 evening trips divided by two directions, that's 44 trips entering and leaving the... On average, entering and leaving the subdivision at either of the two points of connection, that's less than one car per minute. And that would not be considered an extreme impact. As engineers, we... And when we do this analysis, just be... You know, as you know, we're just looking at a land use issue. We have not yet done final design for sewer, storm drain, water, all those kinds of things. We do a big-picture analysis to make sure that there's adequate capacity of all city facilities. And when we look at the numbers on that development, we would not say that this exceeds any given capacity for a residential road. Of more concern for you might be a quality of life issue. The roads definitely have the capacity. You're not going to see... You know, inside these subdivisions, you're not going to see traffic jams or anything like that. There's just not that much traffic. But it will affect the quality of life of those people who live on those roads, where the traffic comes and goes.
Thank you. And would you be able to speak to any significant changes that you foresee from 2016 to 2018 in that area with the traffic study being dated two years?
One thing you might want to do is, like I said, I'm not sure with... The traffic study that we have is two years old and it was... It contemplated one additional point of access. You might want to request that that study or a similar one be prepared that more reflects what they're currently proposing, although at this point, it's again, it's a land use issue. And whatever you decide tonight won't be... Will not grant any kind of approval for the street layouts or the lot configurations. That'll... That's just... These are just concept plans at this point.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for city staff? Seeing none, we'll open this item for a public comment, recognizing that there is... Did you have something, Commissioner Green, for city staff?
No, probably more as you open up the public hearing. We see a lot of the public out here and I'm assuming that 90% of the people are here for this particular development. The one thing that I would like... I'm going to move this over a little bit. The one thing that I would like some people to address, I'm assuming that most of you are from the neighborhood and opposing this, is the current zoning is .5 with 20,000 square foot lots and the proposal is to go to 10,000 square foot lots. What I'm curious to know is are you against all development in that neighborhood or any development in that neighborhood? And if some of you will address that, that will better help me make my decision.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Green. And a reminder too with what Mr. Nelson mentioned, we're not looking at everything this evening. We're looking at the rezone. This is a hearing just for the rezone this evening. And we certainly are grateful that many citizens are attending. That helps us get different perspectives from different opinions so that we can make the best decisions and to help us focus our time and energy efficiently on this item. We want everyone to feel welcome to speak. We would respectfully request, however, if someone prior to you has said exactly what you want to say, we're going to address every item that is brought up, whether one person says it or attends, without any public clamor. But if you have something new, a new item, in addition to what has been said, we definitely would like to hear that. That way, we can keep this moving along, but also respect you coming here this evening. And we'll start with those who have signed up in advance to speak on this item in the order that they've signed up. And then anyone else that would like to speak is welcome. So, we have Lorraine Seawar first, if you would like to come up. And every person has up to three minutes to present his or her comments. Thanks for being here. If you could please, everyone state your address for the public record.
I'm Lorraine Seawar. I reside 8151 South Mallard Lane. My home is... Can I use this to show you if you want to see? My home is right here, the very last house, right next to Bangator Highway, and I deal with the noise. First of all, I'm not a public person. I don't speak. I sit in the back of church and I don't say a word, so this is a big thing for me to talk. I stand in support of this neighborhood. I'm the 1%. When we bought our house 18 years ago, we were told that this field would be developed within a year, year and a half. 18 years later, here we are. When I bought my home, that was a scrub street right there. I knew it'd be developed. Anybody else that bought their home in the area should have known the same thing. It's going to be developed. Now, I don't want 20,000 square foot lots in there because unfortunately, you know, I mean, it's a lifestyle for people, but unfortunately for some of the neighbors, it can become an eyesore. I don't want that. You know, as Mr. Garbet stated, these homes are going to be larger homes. They're going to be, you know, $390,000 home. You're going to get some good quality people in there. We're going to get some young families. They're going to bring a new generation to our neighborhood because our neighborhood has evolved into mostly an older generation neighborhood. So, I think that will be good for the community itself. And these people are going to have young children. They're going to be concerned about the traffic issues as well. They're not going to be speeding up and down the roads because their children are going to be residing there as well. You know, my neighbors are very impassioned about the traffic and I think right now at 40th West there, where the soccer park comes in, there's an empty field there, is all you would need to do is shore up that and make it a four-way stop sign. That would solve a ton of the problems because that would allow people to get in and out of the neighborhood. I'm sure it would cost some money, but it would... To me, it seems like a very easy fix. You know, and the traffic study that was done two years ago was based, I think, on close to 100 homes and I think they're proposing about 79, so that would be even less than what the traffic study said on the impact. I'm not greatly impacted. I only have five or six homes that will come past my place, but I'm for it because I want the sound wall up, I want the community in there, I want the community to dissipate some of the noise at 2:30 in the morning. I would love for you guys to can spend the night at my house and listen to what I have to listen to on Bangator Highway. It's horrible. And I'm the mom that's most impacted because the sound wall ends about five, six feet from the corner of my property. It's horrible. You're welcome to come stand at rush hour, too. It's nasty. You know, I feel my neighbors' pain with the traffic that will come in out of the neighborhood, but it won't be all at the same time. It won't impact greatly. You know, whereas you have one car, two cars in front of you to turn left on the 40th, maybe you'll have three. It's really not going to be as big of an impact as they seem to think. I'm not a trained professional on traffic studies and things like that, but these are professional people that have no partial... They're not partial one way or the other. They're providing their professional opinion and if they say it's not going to be of great impact, I think that that would stand to be valid. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Seawar. Next, we have Mr. David Short.
Hi, David Short, 3894 West, 8350 South. As a city council, you invite us to planning and city meetings where you ask us to... For our input and you listen, but we want you to hear us. Once again, we are here at a planning meeting to discuss zoning changes, as said many times. I'm against the rezone at the new subdivision from half-acre lots to quarter-acre lots. If you just leave them at half-acre lots, we wouldn't even be here. You could just develop it. It's okay to develop it, but leave them at half-acre lots. At least this city or this developer has listened to the city planners, found out what has gone wrong in the past and has addressed some of those problems. And this plan could work if it passes as it is right now. What concerns us is the developer also has tied up the parcels on Susan Way, which is just west of this, that little pie shape across the canal, and says he has no plans for them right now. But what if his... But what if plans change and he wants to add that to the development and make a bridge across that through Jordan Meadows subdivision? What happens to this plan? I want to believe the developer, but things happen. What guarantees do we have about the access through our rural, our RR1 zone lots? I live on 8350 South and at horseshoes with 8250 South, which keeps traffic to a minimum and that's good. Most of us have horses and farm animals in this area and we load and unload and things go wrong when lots of cars are coming down that road. Everybody knows the struggle about that and everybody moves cautiously around this area. I am not opposed to the development of land the way it's zoned. Just the access, if they develop across Susan Way. There's already three exits. I guess we all know that. I don't need to say that. But please consider what may happen with traffic if the developer changes his plans and decides to access a new subdivision through our RR1 zone lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Next, we have Dara Miskel. Did I do that any justice? Did I do that any justice? Is that...
No.
Obviously not, sir. I apologize.
Before anybody says anything, Dana had to leave, and she asked me to fill in for her, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. And your name, sir?
My name is David Burge. I live at 3944 Maple Leaf Way. I'm the fourth house on the end as you go out on 40th West, which is quite a chore to do right now to get on 40th West, let alone what would happen with this penny houses in here. I guess first of all, what I want to say is, none of us are against the development there that I know of. When I moved in there 25 years ago, I was told by officials of West Jordan City that even one of the subdivisions on the other side of the canal would not be built. But we knew that that would happen eventually, as we know that this property needs to be developed, and we are quite excited for the people to move in. Problem we have is the plan that was presented is the same plan that was presented last time, with the exception, we have one fewer entrances and exits to the facility, to the property there. What I would suggest is when these 80 homes or 79 homes move in, a lot of those homes will have two or three children. That's kind of the size of families you'd have in a 10,000 square foot home. Right now, the children going to, to the elementary school have to go all the way out to 40th West and drive down to Columbia Elementary School because there's no entrance. We recently built a new bridge over Bangater. We moved it from the old location, moved it down, and that's great, but there's no access for all these children to get across. So they still have to go down and go around just to get to school. The other thing is, is with that many houses in there, and again, one less exit, I have to laugh at the fact that they are counting the north as two exits. They all funnel to go over that one bridge over the canal. What happens if there's an accident on that bridge? What happens if there's not another way out that way? What if there's an emergency? What if there's a fire in that subdivision and it needs to be evacuated? We're not taking that into consideration. None of us doubt that Garbet Homes is a quality institution and has a quality product, and we would look forward to having them there if we could get, regulate the lots down to, in my opinion, I think they'd be perfect at a third acre. That's what my house is, is a third acre lot. And if we could get it down to that, I realize Garbet Homes would make less money, but we could take care of part of the traffic problem that way, which is really a problem. And thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Next we have Gary Peterson.
Thank you for letting us come. I'm Gary Peterson at 3691 West, 8140 South, so just to the very north of that property. We're not adverse also to developing this land, just the number of homes and the number of traffic that's going to be in there. In our particular area, we have three families that have special needs children that are always out in the streets and then on other streets the same way. So there's concern about the traffic going there. When I looked at the traffic study that was quoted in 2016, first of all, I'm not sure it made a whole lot of sense, but now we're talking about three-car garages, which contains three cars with perhaps teenage children or whatever. And so that's indicating one, in the morning, with 68 home, or 68 traffic exits, that's only 85% of those homes that would be going out of those exits. When they did the traffic study, there were three additional streets that were considered in there because of the west exit, which has now been decided not to do. And every one that goes out through Maple Leaf Way has to go across that bridge. There may be two exits out of the lots, but it all has to go across Maple Leaf Way. So to my knowledge, this is the third year that I've been here addressing this. I don't know when anybody's going to listen, or if it matters, what those of us that live here and have been living here are facing, but we're not adverse to them being able to develop it. It's just that many more homes, that many more traffics, much more traffic is just going to be a, a real disaster, I think. I don't know that it's ever been, as near as I've concerned, been concerned, that 40th West has ever been addressed as to how to help that particular area. We've got so much traffic on there that it's already difficult to get out of there. The other thing which was addressed was the emergency situation, because there's such a limited amount of ability to get in and out of there. Any kind of an emergency situation would make it very, very difficult. Those are my main concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next we have John Brand.
Hello, I'm John Brand. I live on 8350 South, about halfway between 40th West and the development. And I don't have any problem with developing that area over there, but I have to quantify that with a couple of reasons. Number one is it should not cost me any money at all. If someone's going to make a lot of money on developing, I shouldn't have to help support it by paying for improvements that I don't need or want. Also, the other reason is we have an area there that the expectation when we moved in, I've, I've been living in West Jordan and that neighborhood now on 8350 South for 41 years, for 41 good years. It's a very nice place to live, and when I first moved here, West Jordan was one of the largest or fastest growing communities in the whole country, so I expected a lot of growth. And I picked that area to live in because it looked like no one would ever bother me there. There were large lots, we're far enough away from the neighbors not to holler too loud at each other, not have any problems, a country atmosphere, a nice relaxed place to live, so kids could grow up and have fun. And that's the reason we lived there. And on 8250, 8350, there's landlock on the south with a trailer court, landlock on the north, 40th West on the west side, and whoever in their own right mind would ever wonder children across that canal? And if they put 79 homes over there, there's going to be a lot of kids there, and they don't have any business even driving across the canal into our, our area. Now, I know that the developer says he doesn't want to come through our area, but also the older I get, the more wary I become of never say never. And that's the reason why I'm here to ask you, that his wishes are not to bring anyone through our area. It used to be called Huntington Estates. Not to do now or in the future, and I have no problem otherwise. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Next we have Clive Kilpak.
Good afternoon and evening. My name is Clive Kilpak. I live at 3813 West Elwood Way, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak against the proposed Aurora Heights rezone. This same request came before the Planning Commission on July 5th, 2016, for a development then called Jordan Hollow. This is the same property, only there were to be 80 homes and an egress into Huntington Estates subdivision to the west, which we've already discussed. The concerns presented to you today by my neighbors and myself will be the same concerns presented at that meeting where the commission voted 3 to 2 to recommend against the rezone to the city council. When the issue came before the city council on October 12th, 2016, the public hearing resulted in a 6-0 vote by the city council to leave the land as rural residential .5 acre lots. This time, the issue comes under a different name, Aurora Heights, with Garbet Homes making the petition for the landowners. The plan has not really changed, other than the egress through Huntington Estates has been removed, which will put more traffic on Maple Leaf Drive and Meadowlark. It is misleading that there are two means of egress on the north, since both of them exit onto Maple Leaf Drive and go through the same existing neighborhoods to reach 4,000 West or 7,800 South. Which brings up the bigger issue of 4,000 West. In response to a question I posed to the city a week or two ago on Facebook, I was told, quote, "Currently, there are no plans to widen 4,000 West with Bangater Highway intersections under construction. Drivers may be using 4,000 West as an alternate. Once the construction is complete, traffic will hopefully be reduced on 4,000 West," end quote. 4,000 West has been a nightmare for residents for a lot longer than UDOT's decision to make changes to the Bangater Highway. The city has failed to provide adequate parking for the soccer parks, causing congestion in our neighborhood streets during tournaments, and peak hour traffic, which seems to be most hours of the day, make it impossible to make south turns onto or out of many subdivision roads which feed into it from the east side, between 90th South and 7,800 South. These issues will continue to be a problem so long as businesses grow in the Nike Business Park and now the newer, larger Public Works Building on the west side of 4,000 West, and it will be a bigger issue if you allow this rezone and development as it now stands. I urge the commission to research the decisions of previous bodies and councils and recognize that this rezone is not necessary nor wanted by the community, the developer claims it will benefit. The only ones who will benefit from this particular rezone is the developer, the landowners, and the city who will get the water rights to the land and additional prior property taxes for the new, new homes. It will not be the neighboring residents or the occupants of the new homes.
Thank you, Mr. Kilpak. Next we have Sheri Burton.
Do I have five minutes? I'm representing a group of neighbors.
Thank you.
First, could I pass out a map to you guys so you can see where we're talking about that's affected?
Please.
Would that be okay?
Thank you.
David? Okay, my name is Sheri Burton. We've lived in West Jordan since 1974. We lived on 8350 South for 20 years. We've been on Maple Leaf Way for 25 years. On page three of your staff report, it says, "This rezone will not adversely affect adjacent properties." Page four says, "No significant traffic impact is anticipated, and the rezone is acceptable with regards to transportation." I'm here to dispute that. There's three existing neighborhoods. I've highlighted them on that, that map. The three different ones are in three different colors that will be affected. Jordan Oaks is in purple, Pheasant Run is in green, and Lindsay Estates is in blue, I believe. Okay, our concern is not with the size of the homes, but the number of homes going in and the traffic it will create. Both exits on, exits on the north, if you can see, they call it two exits, but it's really only one. They're a block apart. They both funnel out onto that same street, and everybody in that neighborhood has to come up Maple Leaf Way. There are 91 homes, 54 in Pheasant Run and 37 in Jordan Oaks, that all come up Maple Leaf Way. Adding 80 more almost doubles the amount of traffic. And there was a city study done. In 2008, we wanted speed bumps on our street, and they, the city came out, they laid their wires in the road that measure how fast they're going and how many cars. We had, at that time, with the existing homes now, just under 800 cars a day, going at an average speed of 40 miles an hour. So they put supposedly the speed bumps in. There are a few people that go off of Maple Leaf Way onto 3850 West through Lindsay to come out on 7,800, and that is almost as bad to get out as trying to go out on 40th. With those three neighborhoods, there's 176 existing homes, all having to exit either onto 40th West or 78 South. Because of the medium on 78, the only way back into the Jordan Oaks and Pheasant Run and the new neighborhood is Maple Leaf Way. The exit to the south comes out on Old Bingham, but does not connect to Bangater. Most people heading north will take Maple Leaf Way. On peak hours, 40th West is backed up clear from the light at 78th, past Star Street, a half a mile, and trying to get out is a nightmare. When they have the soccer, we have cars parked illegally on both sides of the road. It says no parking, it's striped red, but they still park there. You have to pull halfway out into the road if you're going to turn left to try and see around the cars to cross the street. And a big concern is, we can't even get it now on peak hours. What are we going to do with all of these added cars coming in? With the homes that you're suggesting, we would have 255 households, all trying to get out onto either 78th or 40th West. Now, three-car garages, that doesn't just add, that, that adds, what, 240 possible cars, husband and wife that work and maybe a teenager, both going and coming twice a day and maybe to the store? And then the construction is all going to be down Maple Leaf Way. We got notices that they were going to repave our road, so we're going to repave the road, and then we're going to have the big trucks coming down the road tearing it up. Okay, the speed bumps that they installed are inadequate. They are 25 feet long. You wouldn't call that a speed bump. They were supposed to be like this, flat across the top. They're 25 feet long in asphalt instead of concrete, so they're inadequate. We need more of them, and we need them to actually slow cars down. Cars can go over them 25 miles an hour. That's the speed limit, so what is the purpose of having them? And they go pedal to the metal in between them. I've even seen cars pass other cars on our street. Our street is 35 feet wide. That's 10 feet wider than most other streets. And the lots are big, the houses are big, people rarely, rarely park on the street, and so it's like a Speedway. It's pedal to the metal all the way. It's a third of a mile from the top of the street down to the bottom. And according to what I connected from the study we had before, I think our traffic could increase 60% if two-thirds of the people from that neighborhood come up our street. My suggestion is keep it at half acre lots and change the speed bumps and maybe put some down on those other streets. Another suggestion would be to put in a bigger neighborhood park to take up some of the property. And if they have to keep the houses that they are, instead of making a straight road from north to south and giving people the option of going out either way, change the road so it divides the neighborhood in half. Half would be forced to go out the south, half would be, be forced to go out the north because it wouldn't be a through street. So, those are my recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Would anyone else like to add anything new that hasn't been mentioned? You're welcome to come up. Thank you. So, Mr. David, Mr. David? If you could help me with that.
My name is David Offlinop. I live at 8086 South, Leslie Drive.
Thank you.
Many of the items that's, has already been discussed, the 2008 traffic study, the speed bumps, the soccer parking, the special needs, children in the area. A couple of things that haven't been addressed, and this map does not actively depict the ingress and egress that we, that everyone has really been talking about for this area. And as mentioned earlier by you, Mr. Karen, that the traffic study is kind of inadequate for what we have right now. If the traffic study in 2008 revealed 800 cars going up and down the street, and that, by national averages, there's 876 impact to the area, this area does not traditionally and will not meet the national averages because of the density of the houses and the restricted area going into this 21-acre parcel. Another thing that really hasn't been addressed, there is at 8117 Leslie Drive, you can look on your maps that are before you, there is an LDS State Center. And with an LDS, LDS State Center, there is something going on at that LDS State Center almost every day of the week, even including Monday nights, when there's supposed to be family home evening. And if you have a lot of increased traffic going up and down this area, it will have a significant impact. And unlike everyone else, this should not be developed in anything less than half acre lots. The other thing that I'd like to say, that Garbet Homes probably builds a very nice home, but it really appears that there needs to be an immediate traffic study to really, to see what impacts this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Applenopp.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Scott Lamson, 3954, 8350 South. I was curious about the building, the new West Jordan building. It appears to have like 400 bay doors for trucks. That might be exaggerating, but have we in our traffic engineering taken that into, into consideration of all the traffic that that building that you guys put up is going to bring onto the 40th West? We, we're trying to get out of that, our neighborhood, and you just can't. And I don't, I'm no traffic engineer, but I can do basic math, and you put 80 houses in there with three-car garage and two parents and a couple of kids in the basement and the millennials that moved back in with mom. I know, you do the math, and it's, that traffic study is definitely not right. The other concern is that, that pie shape at the end of the, the thing that we talked about, apparently we're not going to put a bridge on it, or we, we talked about that. But Susan Way, 8350... But Susan Way, 8350 and 8250, those streets don't have curb and gutter, they don't have any sidewalk, they don't have anything on them. It's a rural road, a narrow rural road at that. So any, any traffic on that, that neighborhood and that subdivision is going to be an issue, a safety issue of every size and shape. I think the rest of it, you guys have beat up on enough, but... Do we know? Does anybody have an answer on that building? How much traffic's going to come in and out of there? Big trucks, salt trucks, cop cars, fire trucks? What are we going to have already dumping on the 40th West from that building? Just, just your building?
Thank you. We'll add that to the list to make sure we get the answers tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamson. Anyone else? Please come forward.
I'm Julie Nuchitelli. I live on 8128 South Mallard Lane. And I just want to say, I know that it's a lot of change, but I think we need a compromise in the middle. I think that the number of people that are going to be coming in and out of that neighborhood, you brought up the millennials. In our home, we have five drivers, where before we had more than that. One of the concerns that I have is, as we're aging, as I had a son commit suicide at our home, I'm concerned on how quick the response time is going to be. We seem to have a lot of traffic coming on, on our Maple Leaf. And we have, we had an accident down at our house at the corner, where they whipped around the corner and came and hit our mailbox. So I think that the speed is too fast in this neighborhood. And so, I want to know what you can do as a city to fix those roads and make that safer for our people in the neighborhood. So that's pretty much, I'm pretty direct and to the point, but I do think that a compromise, I'm not opposed to change, I just think that some of the change, it needs to be a happy place for all of us to live and to grow our families and have all of that in there. And I just want to quickly tell the city fire department how grateful I am in that time of loss, how wonderful our West Jordan police and fire, they are amazing. And I just think that we need to look at the impact on those other homes coming in there. Maybe I'm selfish, but I want that oxygen mass on us first, but we need to look at how many more people are going to be in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nuchitelli, and our condolences on your loss, and thank you for your service. Would anyone else like to speak? Please come forward. Come on down.
Robert Kingston, 8390 South, Susan Way. I just wanted to add, we haven't really addressed some of the traffic patterns to the south, on the south egress. When we look at the future growth for West Jordan, we've got mass transit just, just south of there, we've got a new elementary school east of Bangater, just right off of Old Bingham. And so, I, I'm not opposed to the development, and I appreciate all the comments from our neighbors from Maple Leaf and some of the others. But a lot of that, a lot of the thing that hasn't been addressed is the calming, or that, I guess, the reduced amount going through Maple Leaf because of that through street to the south. Again, Salt Lake Community College intends to have their campus become the largest campus in the valley, the one just, just south of 90th. And the, again, it does give us through access straight through to Old Bingham, and potentially creates a best route for anyone on Maple Leaf or the new subdivision to get to anything east of Bangater. So I just thought I'd add that, and I, again, I'm not opposed to the development.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Would anyone else like to speak?
Diane Sharp-Roberg. I live at 8409 South, Meadowlark Lane. I think I'm one of the only ones representing my particular subdivision, which was originally called Bloomington Acres. I have lived there for 32 years. I was the second resident only, there were only two people, and it was barren and, you know, it's, I've seen a lot of growth, but we did know that when we moved in there, that dead-end street meant it was going somewhere, someday. What we didn't know was Bangater Highway was coming in, we weren't told that when we moved in. And I live right on the southeast corner of where this subdivision's going to go in, so I will border this. And my question, I've got a few questions. I've met, is it Paul Garbutt, is that his name? I've met him, and he's a very pleasant, really good guy, and I, I had a chat with him about the subdivision. I told him I liked the original plan of the other people that were trying to present this subdivision initially, and it was shot down. Because Meadowlark Lane is also wider than most streets, and I don't know if this subdivision's going to continue on with that same width, but it is larger, and so people tend to like bobsled ride right down Meadowlark. And I know people down the street have had a lot of complaints with too much traffic flying through, and so of course we know that it's going to get worse as things go on. But my thing is, I would like a compromise. I'm not against the subdivision, because I've always known it was coming someday. But my question would be, I would definitely want the speed bumps, and of course, we can only keep that to the residential speed of 25 miles an hour, if that's what we expect. 20 would be better, but we can only go by the law, which is 25. But if that can at least help us. Also, the way the plan was before, it took a turn, just past my house, and it took a turn to the west, and I liked that plan much better. And Paul said that it's not a done deal that we have to stick to this plan. So that's my objection there. I'm also concerned about that little retention area, because my property would border that retention area. I want to know about if there's going to be some fancy, nice-looking walls that are going up around the subdivision, and also what's going to happen to the Bangater side, because I live on Bangater and it's a nightmare, and it's horribly noisy. I can't speak in my backyard at all. And so I'm wondering, well, that, I'm sure that wall will continue, is my guess. That would be a concern I have. So, and I also run a little dance studio for 30 years, and again, lived there for 32. So I'd like to know that my little students can get out, and they're three years old, walking across the street to my house with their parents in hand. So I would want to see safety be a big deal. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Roberg. Anyone else? Going once? And just a reminder, if you've already spoken, we can't do a double. Okay? Okay?
And some of the roads in the area be repaired, or scheduled to be repaired? Because some are in pretty poor shape, they've been patched and patched and patched.
Thank you.
This body wouldn't have an answer to that question. This body wouldn't have an answer to that question. You need to contact our Public Works Department, and they could tell you that.
Thank you for inquiring. Would anyone else like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing no further comment, we'll close the public comment section and ask Mr. Garbutt if he would like to come up and address anything that has been mentioned in the public comment
Thank you. I've asked David Chang with Hales Engineering to join me. He just made it a little bit late, but he's here to answer any questions that you might have about that 2016 study, if you, if you would like to ask him any questions.
Thank you. And do you have anything else that you'd like to present as well?
Yeah, I do. After, do you want me to present first, or do you want to have him?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hales on the traffic study?
I don't.
I think we're good right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Luthy.
Sorry, I do have one, actually. And it mostly, I haven't seen the report, but mostly it concerns the big question of the 40th. Was it addressed specifically in your report?
The, as far...
The impact on 40th West?
Yes, that was in the report. We had the three access points on the 40th. The one that had the most, we use delay.
Sure.
The, the one with the worst amount of delay is no longer being used, so that, and most of that traffic that was in that intersection that, with the worst amount of delay, was already existing. So in the background conditions, where before we put our project on, it was already not doing that great. As I guess everybody here already knows.
Sure.
These intersections aren't doing that well.
But by adding this, it didn't add a substantial problem to it?
It did not.
Okay, did it take into account that public works facility that's going to be across the street?
It did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales, and Mr. Garbutt.
Okay, thank you. A couple of people mentioned that there needs to be a compromise. So when we first looked at this, you know, we, we decided not to pursue the R18 zoning, which is allowed under the, under the master plan, in, in regards, just feeling that R110 would have been a better fit for the community. You know, we held a neighborhood meeting last, last week, and we truly wanted to listen to the neighborhood and, and hear their concerns and answer their questions. So I think we heard a lot of that tonight. You know, there is opposition. There is also support for our project. And I think that there's also support or consideration that needs to be made for the potential new residents that would be living in this community. And I think that there's definitely a value that they can bring to West Jordan as a whole. These traffic problems were, were neither caused by us, and they won't be resolved by, by us not building there. I think, and then backing up just one, that quote from the traffic engineer, I just, I took that from the study that was provided us in the, in the staff report. And then just a couple of other points. Our land has been, has been vacant for many years. That, that is true. It has also been looked at numerous times and has gone through a public process to determine what the best use, use for that would be through the, through the master plan zoning, and that was determined to be this median density that we're seeking. We are willing to put on the record that we will not seek any access to the west on that across the canal, and we have no intention of doing that and will not do it unless we are required to by the city. In regards to emergency situations, I think to speak to that, we, we're providing an extra access point to the neighborhood on Maple Leaf if that bridge were to fail. They can now enter it through the south without having to go over that bridge.
Please, please, we want, we want to have any shouting out. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, those are my, those are my comments. I think all, a lot of this has to revolve around traffic. I think this is a problem that the entire valley deals with. We're changing, our population's going to double in the next 30 years, and these are issues that we all need to address together. But I, I would ask the planning commission to take into consideration the value that having 80 new residents to this community would bring. And I'd just like to thank you for your time, for your service, and would ask for your support in our application.
Thank you, Mr. Garbutt. All right, so now, in this portion of the meeting, what I'd like to do is just make sure that we recapitulate things that have been said. If I've missed anything, please let me know, because we do listen, we do care, this does matter. There are some things that are outside the scope of what we're looking at this evening. For instance, correct me if I'm wrong, questions on sound walls, Maple Leaf Way repairs, a traffic calming measures, response time for services. This evening, we're just looking at a rezone. Am I, am I in error there, anyone?
Response times could be an issue.
Would you please say that?
I, I would think that we could look at response times, because that's a public safety, and that's one of the criteria.
Good point. Thank you. There will be later meetings where everything comes into play, and so we're not ignoring that, we just want to make sure that we're, we're focusing on what we're really focusing on this evening. It seems that there's been...
Mr. Kilpak?
Yes, Mr. Gardner?
Sorry to interrupt, but I would also reiterate to the public that you're only a recommending body at this point. This actually would be the city council's decision on whether the rezone goes...
Yes, thank you. So what we do as a body here is, we, we're appointed by city council, and we make recommendation to city council. So whatever outcome happens tonight, you'll be able to go through it again with, with city council, since we are a recommending body. It seems like most people mentioned that they weren't against development, just rezoning and the size of lots. Traffic seems to be the issue. Paying for improvements would be outside the scope of this evening. Some, some questions for staff, if they could please help me and us and everyone understand. So this has already been heard a couple of years ago by city council and planning commission. When was the future land use map adopted? And if, well, why don't we take it one by one? Sure.
2012. 2012 with the last general plan update.
Right. Thank you. So that goes with the, the general plan. Ingress and egress points seem to be a hot topic. Mr. Nelson, is there anything else that you'd like to clarify relative to what we've heard tonight from Mr. Garbutt and the residents?
Sure. It's been mentioned several times that the, the two points of access on the north are really only one. I assure the public, we can count to two. There are two on the top, but there's one on the south as well. So when we mentioned that there's two points of access, the two accesses here at the, at the north end, they do combine, as was suggested by the public, into one access point. So that's the, really the point of where it all comes together, and that, that is accurate. There also is a point of access here on Meadowlark Lane that runs down to Old Bingham Highway. So for all intents and purposes, there are two points of access into the subdivision, one at the north, one at the south. And I think more of a concern is the amount of, of difficulty getting on and off of, of the busier roads like 40th West. That's where you're going to run into your delay. People coming and going, you know, that 40th West is a busy road, and the vehicles that, that come and go off of 40th West are going to be delayed. As far, one more point regarding traffic is, we're looking at the difference between 20,000, or R120 lots and R110 lots. So either way, this would be, there would be an impact. To quantify the impact, you would have to compare the difference between the two. And that's something that, you know, would, would probably be borne out in a, in an updated traffic study, or, you know, again, we're, we're looking at a, at a traffic report that was done several years ago. It did contemplate a, you know, a different, slightly different pattern with the, the one point of access that goes through the existing neighborhood that's not contemplated in this particular application. But again, we are only looking at a land use, and the, the final points of access would be something that would, would be borne out through preliminary approval. So even if you do rezon the property now, it'll still come back at a future time for preliminary plat, and that's when we'll have more quantifiable analysis on all of the impacts, both traffic, utilities, and others.
Thank you. Inclusive of response time, traffic calming measures with the speed bumps, the speed limits, adequate trips, you know, taking into consideration maybe, or, you know, boomerang?
Yeah, just to find that there is a difference between a speed study and a traffic impact study. There may have been previous speed studies at the request of, of residents that looks at, that counts traffic and measures their speed. What we're referring to tonight is a traffic impact study that measures the impact of a given development on an existing system.
Thank you. And all that will come back to us at a later date. Thank you. Commissioner Green?
I, I've got a question. One of the, one of the people that offered, one of the persons of the community that offered testimony tonight made a, and, and, so I, I just want to make sure it's clear, talked about routing some traffic to the north, some traffic to the south, and kind of closing the loop in, in the property. That's not permitted by code, correct?
No, that would not be an option. Well, thank you. Let's see. Moving on then, we've got, and this comes quite often, it seems like it's always the conundrum of the rights of the existing residents who are landowners versus the rights of people wanting to develop, and where is that intersection? So could I please ask, just for clarification for everyone, since, well, if we could go to page three of the staff report, under criteria three, where it says, "The proposed amendment furthers the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city," because we've referenced the general plan, and I, I'm grateful that I was able to serve on that, so whenever an item comes before us, I'm always looking at the general plan, where it says the... Where it says the, the city has determined that this property be used for medium density residential and R110 is designated as medium density residential, but I think we're just trying to make sure that this is the highest and best use within the scope of medium density residential. So the, the RR zone is established to provide areas where single-family residential and associated uses is defined in this article may be harmoniously integrated with incidental agricultural uses to keep a limited number of farm animals and fowl in conjunction with single-family dwelling units. So we're trying to retain parcels that are large enough to provide efficient and attractive development as well as having them- Let's see. It's also intended to accommodate residential developments which are oriented to an equestrian lifestyle. So it seems like we're, we're trying to get everything within here. And it later references there's a canal and a highway. So housing half its density would probably not be as desirable as the development of 10,000 square foot lots. It furthers the general welfare because it uses land more efficiently, reduces the likelihood of farm animals negatively impacting the surrounding non-rural residential areas. So I, I think that that's what we're trying to figure out. Could you please help us understand, because some residents have said half acre, fine, or, or, sorry, the third acre, fine, but we don't want to decrease the size of the lots. Within a medium density residential, what is the high and low end that can be considered? Thank you. Can you explain for everyone in attendance what R18 and R19 and R110 mean? Mr. Page?
Yes, the R-1-8 is a minimum of 8,000 square foot lots. The R-1-9 is a minimum of 9,000 square foot lots. And the R-1-10 is a minimum of 10,000 square foot lots. The PC and the PRD is a planned community or planned residential development, which your densities of those zones is determined through the actually application process or master plan development through the planning commission and the city council.
Thank you. So 3.1 to 5 dwelling units per acre. So really the R110, if we were to rezone, is actually the highest that we could do within a medium density zone.
Without going through the, the more extended reviews of a planned community or planned residential development? Yes, that's true.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Page. Any other questions for staff from commissioners? And/or did I miss anything to your knowledge on what's been brought up? Well, we'll deliberate amongst the planning commission. Thoughts, comments? Commissioner Green.
I think we have somewhat of a conundrum here. Here's the, here's the conundrum that I have. An R110 is more consistent because of the canal separating the current zone. An R110 is more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood than it is with the RR1 that's west of the canal. So from an overall planning perspective, it seems like the R110 is a better fit for the neighborhood, given what we've got to the north and to the south. The difficulty that we have, and it's also consistent, by the way, with the roads that run out to 40th West, Maple Leaf Way, because that's an R110 as well. The difficulty that I have is that we really do have only two points of access, one that goes out Maple Leaf and one that goes out the other way to the south. Trying to convince people because it, it's going out to Old Bingham Highway, that's a, that doesn't put you on Bangor, that doesn't put you in the middle of anything, because I know where Old Bingham Highway is at. So I tend to agree with the people who have got up and, and discussed, a lot of this is going to go to 40th West. A lot of this is going to go to 7800 South. I, I do agree that with the last traffic study being done in 2016, the valley has grown in the last two years at a rate that some of us don't like. The fact of the matter is, is that the traffic patterns on 40th West, the traffic patterns on 7800 South, with the new addition of some, some other projects, the Public Works Project, some of those others, may have increased or changed traffic patterns as well. So I think I agree with the, with the traffic, with the city engineer that we need at least a new traffic study. And I will tell you that I want to see the whole traffic study and not just the summary, because I want to read it. I want to see where the traffic counts came from, peak traffic counts, all that other stuff that I know engineers love to put together in traffic reports, because I've seen them out of UDOT and they're so much fun to read. But I want to, I, I, I would like to see the entire traffic report. Going from, you know, when you look at the difference between 40 homes and 80 homes, which would roughly be about the number if you went from R110 to R120, the 40, you know, if you, if you build an R120 home, this is part of the conundrum, is that those are going to be bigger homes. And those people are going to have, I'm going to assume, have more toys. And Judy can, Judy can testify to this, that she's got, how many, how many RVs parked in your backyard, Judy? We won't go there. But it, it increases that kind of traffic that I'm not sure what we're going to balance off going R10 to R120. So I'd like to see a traffic report. If I had to vote tonight without seeing a traffic report, I'd vote against this. I'm not sure that we've completely made, that part of criteria two works, part of criteria three works, but I'm not completely sold on it yet. It is compatible, but yet it's not. And I agree to some extent with the staff report that the R110, you don't want farm animals next to the R110 if that's what a, if, if that's what an RR.5 does. So it, it puts us in a bind, but I think I really do want to see a traffic study.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Chair. I would, as a resident of this city, I would love to see half acre lots, but that is not what the developer is asking for. I do live on an acre. That's why they talked about all the vehicles and I don't want you to call code enforcement because I don't have three RVs in my yard. But I have a son who has several toys and lives on a small lot. But our, the property developer is asking for a 10,000 square foot lot. The developer is asking for 10,000 square foot. That's what's before us tonight. So either we have to approve it or he has to come back and change and ask for the, are the 20, or the half acre lots. And if you own the property, you certainly have a right to do that. But the owner of the property is saying they're asking for 10,000 square foot lots. And so we kind of have to look at the owner of the property. The owner of the property that you lived on asked for the zone in which you are living. The owner of the property that I live on asked for, well, at that time, all you could have was a thousand, an acre, because I have lived here since 1963. But right now, we're looking at 10,000 square foot lots. I do agree with Commissioner Green that we do need to see a new traffic study and not depend on the old one. And, and get an answer from our engineer as to how they feel this would work. Thank you.
Commissioner England.
I agree with everything you said, Kelvin. Additionally, I'd like to add that I think, first of all, this meets the criteria of the general plan. So I'm a little torn on that. We have a developer who's trying to come in and improve the city and listen to the surrounding neighborhoods and try and serve two masters at the same time. I think the critical problem here is that we've got a neighborhood surrounding that's at critical mass, that, that traffic is, it's broken already. So whatever we're doing is going to compound that problem. So if I had to vote tonight, it would, I'd vote against it, but I would like to see a traffic study.
Well, and the word conundrum's been bantered about and it's true because we've got the general plan, which comprised, which includes the future land use map and it's incompatible with it. But I'm not a big fan of shrinking lot sizes, especially when we're trying to develop a city where it's not the city of the starter home. And then people move out, you know, we don't want to perpetuate the bedroom community. Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Quinney.
Ah, Commissioner Quinney, where to share. Thank you.
I'm going to stand a little bit apart from the, oh, I've got to do this, from the rest of the group, because I feel like, and we've said this, we've got a developer who has a right to develop the land that they own. They've met all the criteria. I agree we need a traffic study. I agree that there are faults in the traffic flow and that the city has some responsibility to fix that. However, those are independent of the request tonight. We can still consider a decline on any project on this at a future date. All we're asking for is a rezone that conforms to the general land use map and is, and the, and the developer's met all the criteria. From my point of view, tonight, this is, this is an approval for me. But that's my point of view.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chair. I would have to agree with Commissioner Quinney. I think the burden of proof has been met. Change is tough, it really is, and especially in a neighborhood where you've lived a long time. But I believe that Garbatt Homes has done a commendable job, listening to the neighbors, building something or proposing something that would actually blend in with the area. Traffic is an issue. I would like to see a traffic study, but I, I really think in the overall perspective of West Jordan and our growth, this meets with my approval as well. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? Seeing none, would anyone like to propose a proposal?
I've got a question for staff. If we were to table this pending a traffic study, how long would we need to do that and be able to have a, a traffic study and get the results back that you guys can look at, that they could do all that stuff? How long would that take?
I'd probably, I know you're asking, you have an exact question. I'd say probably, just to be on the safe side, four to six weeks.
Because if we, so we have options. We can approve, deny, or table. But if we approve it, it has met criteria, as has been mentioned. But if we rezone it, it's rezoned from that point on. A recommendation to the city council to rezonate, but then they haven't seen a traffic study either. Thoughts? Commissioner Green.
It's me again.
Yes, Commissioner Quinney.
I just, I just feel, and I feel very strongly, that it's our responsibility to make a recommendation based upon the plans in front of us. I think it's irresponsible of us to hold this off for everybody that has walked in the door today, for whatever reason, to wait for a traffic study to be completed. That isn't going to change what the best and highest use of this land is. Right? So let's do our job. Let's make a recommendation. If we deny that, that's fine, but let's make a recommendation to not table this and let the city council deal with this when they see this possibly with a, with the traffic study in, in hand as well.
Real Commissioner Green.
I love the sharing the mic stuff. Oh, I, I don't 100% disagree with Commissioner Quinney. I, I agree that we, we owe, it would be nice to give the citizens a way ahead. The one thing though, that the reason why I'm hesitant and would like to see a traffic study is that criteria three specifically says that we have to, that the proposed amendment has to further the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city. And I don't know if I have enough evidence for that tonight. I, I'm not sure, I mean, if we adopt the staff report, the staff report doesn't address the traffic. It addresses the, basically the, the farm animals and those kinds of things and, but it doesn't address the traffic. And I think the traffic, as been pointed out, becomes the safety and the public welfare issue, the public health, safety, and general welfare issue that I'm not sure we have enough evidence on. And that's why I'm leaning towards the traffic study.
Mr. Page? Or Mr. Nelson's first? Mr. Nelson and Mr. Page?
I just want to make sure we have a realistic expectation of what would come out on a traffic study. A traffic study is designed, what it does is it, it, it would count the existing background traffic, it would add what the new traffic, the, the development would add. It would add that to the existing background traffic, it would figure out and what the impacts of those are, and then it would suggest ways to mitigate. If anybody thinks that that would, it would come out with a, a definitive answer, yes, rezone, or no, don't rezone, that will not come out of it. It'll only identify what, what the potential impacts are and some suggested ways to deal with those impacts.
Mr. Page?
I just wanted to note that addressing the public safety for traffic is addressed, I guess, under criteria number four, that staff has just stated that no significant traffic impact is anticipated with this rezone. So that's where we address the traffic issue.
And Bill Baranowski was included in that conversation, correct? That's what's-
Yes.
And who is our traffic engineer for the city? Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Chair. I'll pull it closer so you can hear me. I feel like we do have a duty to act on this. And we do have a duty, it does meet the land use with the R110. If we send this forward, maybe we could make a recommendation that before it becomes before us as a development, that we do have a traffic study. But they are asking only for a rezone and that it does meet the criteria of the land use. Thank you.
Commissioner England.
I'm just going to ask the body here, can we not all agree that traffic is a mess in this neighborhood? And what is a traffic study going to show us that it's going to be, how much more of a mess? I mean, is, how much is it really going to quantify that? Just a hypothetical, rhetorical.
Commissioner Luthy.
I'm still on the fence. I don't have an official, one way or the other. I, there's still a lot to me that is up in the air. And what a traffic study would provide was the difference of, yes, we need to provide either signal or some sort of a mitigation at 40th. That's what it would provide. But if we approved it, got it to the R110, and with the R110 came the traffic study, and the traffic study said, you need to put it in an intersection here or some other form of additional traffic help. And the developer decided not to do that. One way they could get around that is to just put in, I mean, that's a minimum requirement. It's not a maximum. So they could go back and say, instead of putting in a signal, we're going to put in third acre lots. So it's, by, by doing that, it doesn't limit that you wouldn't get the performance that you were going for based off the traffic study. And I know that the traffic study seems very out there. I'm an engineer by trade, so I think I understand them a little better than some of the others. But- but the, it is still kind of that fancy science of best guess, and I know that that gets really frustrating, because it's not an absolute, say one or another. I do agree completely that it is going to go north, it's not going to go south. There's, people are wanting to get during those peak hours to a body that's going to get them to Bangater or Redwood or the freeway, and it's less likely that they're going to go south.
And this item would come back to us, and then city council again, once we get the, there's just a lot more review that needs to be done, so this isn't the end-all, be-all, and yes, we're just considering the rezone this evening. Thank you for all of the great conversation and good various perspectives to make the best decision possible, which leads us to a potential motion. Commissioner Green?
Commissioner Quinney again.
Commissioner Quinney?
Just so we can get this moving forward, so we can quit talking circles, I'm going to make a recommendation. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council resoning 21.04 acres of parcel 21-32-327-006 from RR. .5E to R110E.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion to the motion, beginning with Commissioner Green?
I, I will just go on record that I am going to vote no, because I don't believe that criteria's, at least criteria three has been met. I'm still concerned about criteria two, but at least criteria three has not been met.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's please vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to one in favor of the motion, with Commissioner Green casting the dissenting vote. Moving on to item number three on the agenda, Highlands Landing Subdivision, 7750 South, 5500 West, preliminary commercial subdivision, one lot and one parcel on 9.176 acres, SC2 zone. Peterson Development Company LLC, Victor Barnes is the applicant. Is he here this evening?
Chair? Chair?
Yes.
Can I propose that we have a break while people exit before we start with the second one?
Great, do we have a second to that? We have a second, a five-minute break? Great.
I'm now Larry Garner.
Okay, we adjourn for five minutes.
Next, now Larry Garner.
Thank you.
We reconvene the planning commission meeting, May 15th, 2018, with public hearing item number three. As previously referenced, Highlands Landing Subdivision, 7750 South, 5500 West, preliminary commercial subdivision, in an SC2 zone. Peterson Development Company LLC, Victor Barnes is the applicant. Please feel welcome to come forward and present your application.
Good evening. Paul Stringham of Peterson Development, I'm covering for Vic tonight, he's not able to be here, so I'll make sure I've got the right one on the agenda first tonight. This is the, help me out with the agenda tonight.
Highlands Landing Subdivision first.
Okay, this is Highlands Landing. We're talking about subdivision, we have IHC going in on the, what would be the northwest corner of this, of this piece of property. On the west side of this subdivision, as I'm visualizing in my mind right now, here we go, on that site there, they would be just, just adjacent to the, to the roundabout. They would be taking about half of that space, and I think Ray, you're at, tonight on this, you could possibly show about the four acre part, yeah, there we go, here we go, there we go. So you can see the zoning line, there are the parcel line right there, they're going north and south. IHC would be taken to the west, the remainder pieces, parcel A. Lot one would be IHC. So we're looking to subdivide that tonight for preliminary subdivision, and looking to proceed with the development with IHC. I don't want to ramble anymore, but if I can address any questions that the commission might have, I'm ready to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Stringham. Commissioner Green?
So I'll ask for, because I know there's a couple of us that are asked, this is the, this is the property on 78th and 56th that we rezoned to put the senior housing overlay on the other P, on the, that would be parcel A, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm referencing which project we're dealing with.
Thank you for being clear on that.
Any other questions for Mr. Stringham? We'll save you some time after the public comment section if there's anything you'd like to address.
Thank you.
Mr. McCandless, you have this item for the city?
Yes. Just a couple of extra things to add. So the west, west portion of the property is, on the future land use map, is identified as community commercial, and as you had talked about, this is that, the piece that was zoned to senior housing overlay. That is shown on our, on the plat, the west side of the, or the east side of the property is shown as parcel A, so that's not going to be developed at this point, they'll have to come back in for a sub, formal subdivision plat on that parcel. So you can look at that as kind of a remnant parcel at this time. Really, this is just a two-lot commercial subdivision, it meets the criteria of the zoning ordinance and general plan, for that reason, we recommend approval subject to the conditions that are in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Luthy?
Just so I, I think you just said this, but just so that I understand, the, the senior housing overlay for both areas here is now being divided into two separate, correct? I mean, when we saw it originally, this was one giant senior housing overlay area, now it looks like it's going into two. Am I missing?
No, I think that senior, the senior housing overlay only applied to the east, eastern half of it.
No, no, I'm talking about this and then the part below.
Over to the south.
Yes. Okay, so now it's two separate, but it still has to be senior housing for both of them.
You're correct, so the senior housing does go across that line.
Okay, so I wanted to verify.
Any other questions? We'll open this up to the public. Would anyone like to speak on this item this evening? Please feel free to come forward. Please state your name and address for the public record.
It's Amy A-M-Y Martz, M-A-R-T-Z. I'm at 5438 West Bridle Vista Circle. So I'm a little unclear what's happening. I, I heard the presentation, but still, I'm not sure. So, my understanding was we were going to have strip mall along 78th and 56th, the IHC facility, and then the senior housing, so I am, I don't understand what's being asked for that's different from what was approved a year ago. That's my first question. I'd also like to point out that, that the future land use map, I know this is a little bit of a dead horse, but the future land use map shows us this very low residential, and I'm listening to your prior conversation with the other population, and you really relied on that, but didn't keep to that at all when you made this change. I currently have building behind me, you screwed me twice in the last three years, and I have homes whose base level is right at my six-foot fence level behind me, so you keep eliminating rural residential in favor of development, and I think that the last six conversations, this conversation is the same one, that you're taking out the neighborhoods that we researched, we moved into our area, and replacing them with big growth, very high density. So I'd like to know why you didn't follow your recommendation for the future land use map. You rely on it when it serves your needs, and then you abandon it completely when it doesn't. I'd like to show that your current map, your current zoning map still shows this area as rural residential, so it hasn't been changed at all in the past year, it still shows it as being zoned, RR1D. And I'd like to know why we're allowing people, why the future land map group would have made recommendations counter to the zoning that existed at the time, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about the philosophy behind that, otherwise I just don't understand what we're doing here tonight, I'd like some clarification.
Right, thank you, we appreciate that, we'll definitely clarify. Anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section. And Commissioner Green, you have a, a question or a statement?
I, I will make the statement.
Okay.
Yes, we did not follow the future land use map on this rezone. The reason why is because the corner of 7800 South and 5600 West is turning into a major commercial zone, and this would turn into an appropriate zone for being on the same corner as Smith's. We made that, we made that conscious decision. I can tell you that based on some of the stuff that was done with this rezone, we've looked at resurrecting the committee, the future land use committee, to look at these type of things. The land use map hadn't been updated for, what, seven or eight years?
2012.
2012, so we're six years old, and we, we believe that the most appropriate use for that corner was commercial to match the commercial across it. Doesn't make sense to make, to put low residential, low residential density along two of the busiest streets in West Jordan, so that's why. And to clarify, because it was rezoned, and the way that, it's obvious the way the developer is working to develop this, to put IHC on that corner, I assume that IHC wants to buy the property, and so they're going to buy, they're going to buy part of the property, and they can't buy the whole piece, so we're, we're looking at a subdivision for that rezone if I, or we're looking at splitting the lot and actually creating two lots, one for IHC to purchase, and one for the potential senior housing development to go in, if I'm correct. Am I, I see you nodding north and south, so I must be at least in the ballpark.
City staff, any clarification on that that you'd like to add?
No, that was, that was well done.
Thank you. And Mr. Stringham, would you like to add anything else this evening?
I think I didn't just add, I think Commissioner Green articulated the situation clearly and very well, so we're looking forward to moving on with the project.
Okay, thank you, and we do appreciate the inquiry, thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
I'd just like to add that I am a huge advocate for keeping our low density where we have low density. The only reason that I voted personally against keeping it here was because it is such a major busy intersection, that it makes sense to bring people that are going to do business here. I live very close to this area, and once the Smith's area went in, it just made sense that this becomes a commercial hub. So that, on this particular instance, that, that was my reasoning.
Thank you. Deliberation? Other comments leading to a possible motion? Commissioner England?
I'll make a motion. Nobody has anything. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat for the Highlands Landing Subdivision, located at 7750 South, 5500 West, in the SC2 zone with the conditions listed on page two of the staff report.
Commissioner Luthy?
My second.
A motion by Commissioner England and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Do we have any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's please vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Item number four this evening, or, yes, number four, we've got West Highlands Commercial Subdivision, 5800 West, 7800 South, preliminary subdivision plat, two lots and one parcel on 14.83 acres, in an SC2 community commercial zone, and HFR, high-density multifamily residential zone. Peterson Development Company LLC, Victor Barnes is again the applicant, I assume Mr. Stringham, you're representing him this evening again. Please come forward again.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you explained things very well. This is a larger piece, a larger parcel that we have, we're looking to do a two-lot subdivision. There on the, what would be the lower, the lower portion, here you go, here you go, at the, at the bottom portion of the, of the map up there, you've got two lots. We've got lot one and lot two, this on 7800 South, just east of the Mountain View corridor, and we have, we're looking to, we've zoned commercial, SC2 zone, and we have uses for lot one, we're looking forward to it, and looking to get the subdivision, the preliminary subdivision approval tonight. We're very excited, let me just say as a note, that we're excited about the commercial that's going on in this area. We're getting quality tenants, and we're selective, not judgmental, but we're selective. We want to make sure that we have the great, the right unit mix, the right branding, the right uses for the community. We're really trying to create a sense of community here at the Highlands, with, with all that we've got planned, with the ring road around things, with the roundabouts and so forth, we're trying to create this sense of belonging. So we're quite excited about it, I'm going to Las Vegas on, on Monday, the largest shopping center convention, I've been there probably 40 years now in a row, and I do get tired of it, but it's a great place to present your projects, and I've got a lot of meetings set up, I'm quite excited about what's going on. Thank you. That's more than you want to hear, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Stringham. And for city staff, Mr. McCandless, you have this item as well?
I do, thank you. Just a point of clarification, the area that is zoned, the HFR is north of the, the wash here that extends along the northern part of the property. This is again divided into two lots, and then there's also an alpha parcel, and this area that's just to the north of those two lots, we'll have to come back in, especially the area that's north, will have to be looked at in more detail and possibly rezoned in some, at some point in the future. But again, it's, it's an alpha parcel, it's just a holding zone, and, and we are just recommending approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report, and I'd be happy to address any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCandless?
So I just want to be clear, we're just splitting off the two pieces, we're actually just making a subdivision for the lots one and two on the 7800s facing, facing property.
Correct.
Yeah. Other questions? Seeing no further question, we'll open up the public comment section if anyone would like to speak on this item as well. With no takers, we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Green?
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat for the West Highlands Commercial Subdivision, located at 56, 5800 West, 7800 South, in the SC2 and HFR zones, with conditions listed on page two of the staff report.
Commissioner Luthy?
While I won't change my second, I would be interested in knowing who's coming to lots one and two, if you would be so kind to share.
Lot two has a lot of interest right now, we're meeting with various tenants, so I really don't have anything there. Lot one, Les Schwab, is looking to be there, and they've been very good to work with, they'll be a quality tenant, and they're working on a new design profile of their architecture, and I think you'll enjoy it when you, when you see it, you'll believe, Ray, we need to go before the planning commission for their, for the review and site plan approval, so I think you'll enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was an official second.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Any discussion to the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, bringing us to our final item this evening. Thank you, Mr. Stringham, for doing business in West Jordan. Continuing to do business in West Jordan, along with Mr. Barnes, thank you. Last item, number five, Sprinkler Supply Warehouse, 1457 West, 7800 South, preliminary and final site plan and preliminary and final subdivision plat, one lot on 4.703 acres in a CM zone. Sprinkler Supply, Mike Canning is the applicant. Present this evening? Please come forward. We save the best for last, right?
Mike Canning, Sprinkler Supply. We just want to build a warehouse based on everything that's gone down tonight, so.
Succinct and to the point, is there any specifics that you'd like to mention that might play a, a role in our decision?
Not really, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gardner, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, quickly, let's see if I can get my point, there we go, right, these three parcels were, used to be owned by the Department of Transportation, and, so the reason the subdivision is before you is there's a little tiny piece of property on the farthest east parcel that needs to be dedicated to the, it's a public right-of-way, so that's the reason of the subdivision, and then it also will consolidate the, the three parcels into one, so that's fairly simple. You know, they, really hasn't, the use or what Sprinkler Supply is going to do with this property has not changed since they came in for the zone change almost a year ago. They've already improved- Uh, they've already improved, uh, a portion of, put the parking in already, and with the, if the building's approved, then they'll construct the building, put all the landscaping in, and then, uh, all that good stuff that goes with it. And so, um, you know, this is quickly, there'll be a 20-foot landscape buffer to the property to the east. The property will be, or the building will be 10 feet from 7800 South, which is the minimum, minimum in this zone, but if you've been over by Sprinkler Supply, they do an excellent job of landscaping their building. Of course, that probably helps with the sales of what they do. But, uh, the building went before the design review committee, uh, there was a few minor changes, such as the soldier course, uh, on the windows, and, uh, the cornice on top of the building, uh, top of the parapet anyway, and, you know, it's a really nice-looking building. The one on the very top will be what you will see from 7800 South, and if you can imagine it, uh, being landscaped next to it, it'll, it'll be quite an attractive building. And of course, the, uh, south side, which will only be visible from the, the majority of the time from the Sprinkler Supply lot and the BMC West, uh, storage lot, that's what you'll see is doors. And then on the west side, the architect has added, um, at the request of the design review committee, uh, some pillars to the building. I might add that the building will be, uh, a split-faced type block that will be painted to match the current color of the Sprinkler Supply building, and so it will, it will match along with their other, uh, larger building on 1475. And so staff is recommending approval of this, and so they can get this building constructed. So, any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Gardner?
I'm gonna ask a dumb, I'm gonna ask a dumb question. A few months ago, it seemed like we had an ordinance, we recommended an ordinance to go city council for some width on the, on these arterial streets. Did that ever get passed by the council?
Um, they wanted, it went, we went to the council, they wanted to see a few minor changes to it, and I, what, we had the unfortunate timing of taking it the same night as the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District came and presented their landscaping issue, and so some of the council got caught up in wanting to see specific plant types. My, my desire is to leave that up to the Parks Department, because, um, they're much better knowing what thrives in those type of, because it can be quite a hostile environment, and they've, they've got a lot of experience, so I'm meeting with them next week, and, and we'll kind of come up with a plant list to hopefully satisfy the council.
So the, the follow-up to that is, is that, assuming that we have the intent of that ordinance, is the setback that we have for this piece of property consistent with the intent of that ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Luthy?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Oh, I thought we already did that! I'm sorry, I clearly am out of field.
Oh, just, you, you can do it, just in a minute. Yeah, thank you. But there'll be light. We'll open up the plant, the, uh, the meeting for a public comment. Anybody want to speak on this? Anyone at all? Going once, going twice? We'll close the public comment section and bring it back to Commissioner Luthy.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve preliminary and final site plan, and subdivision for Sprinkler Supply Warehouse, 1457 West, 7800 South, subject to the following conditions, um, one through four. Do I need to actually read those? Okay.
Thank you, and we have Matt Quinney Jr., or number two?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Hanson?
No, I was gonna second, I didn't know what junior was gonna say.
So the motion includes the preliminary site plan and the final plan?
We, because we, we have four of them before us, but this is just for the first two, right?
We should, we, yeah, the motion in the staff report was preliminary, final site plan, and subdivision.
Yeah, I thought I had said that, okay.
And final site.
Yeah, I thought I had said that.
I think we've, yeah, I think we've got them all. Great. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Best wishes with building the, the building. Thank you for being here in West Jordan. A reminder to us all that we have a joint Planning Commission, City Council, and General Plan Committee meeting on May 29th, the 5th, Tuesday, 6 o'clock. Commissioner Quinney?
I'm just making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned.